Public Library Board of Trustees. Board of Trustees, I have the time is five thirty-one. Can I have roll call please, Jeannie?
Yes, Ed McBride.
Present.
Craig Borba.
Present.
Juanita Garner.
Here.
David Norgard.
Present.
And Al Jones is absent.
Thank you. Can you please review the acceptance of the agenda?
The agenda was posted on it before August thirty-first.
Can I get a motion to accept?
I'll move for acceptance.
And I have a second, please.
Second.
All in favor may have roll call, please.
Ed McBride.
Yes.
Craig Borba.
Yes.
Juanita Garner.
Yes.
David Norgard.
Yes.
Four to zero. Okay.
We're on item number three. This is always set aside for public comment. Jeannie, do we have anyone that would like to do have any public comment tonight?
We have, no, I don't think so. We have a few people in the audience. If you want to give public comment, which you usually don't, raise your hand, use the raise hand icon or comment in the chat. Normally, we just have servers and then we have two members from the foundation.
Okay.
No.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept our consent agenda?
I'll move.
A second, please.
One second.
Roll call for the consent agenda, please, Jeannie.
Ed McBride.
Yes.
Craig Borba.
Yes.
Juanita Garner.
Yes.
David Norgard.
Yes.
Four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. It's time for our administrative report, section five, Friends of the Palm Springs Library. Jeannie, is there anyone to give that report?
I'm gonna ask Julie if she would. I don't see anyone else.
Hello, everyone. The Friends had taken August off, but they met yesterday as for their September meeting. And they did elect a new vice president. Gary Mahara is their new vice president. Their past vice president, Richard Richard Ellis retired from the board. And so then they did other business, assigning committees and discussing their upcoming events. They had discussed possibly doing a fall fundraiser, but that did not work out, so they decided not to do it, but they are in full plans for Modernism Week events. They're going to do at least one house tour, possibly two this year. And so they are hard at working on those details. They did finalize a date for their annual meeting, which will be Sunday, April twenty-third this year. And they just kind of reviewed currently where they were in terms of memberships and their financial finances and things like that. So it was just sort of a kickoff to the year sort of meeting. But they are very excited and enthusiastic. They have one board position open and they do have one candidate that they're considering. And other than that, there's nothing else to report unless anyone has a question.
Julie, unfortunately, I missed the annual meeting last year of the Friends. It normally takes place on a Sunday afternoon or?
Yes, they've done that for goodness, many, many years, Sunday afternoon, usually towards the end of April, mid-April, or the very beginning of May. They don't like to wait that long. But they did have to last year. But this year, yeah, they have set the date for that Sunday. And I believe it's going to be here at the main library.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Any other questions? All right, I will sign off for the Friends.
Thank you. Do we have anyone here to give a report for the Library Foundation?
I am David Sidley's coming. Just a second. And then Bill, did you have anything to report? Or are you just here for the other item?
No, David's gonna give the report. And then when we get to the other agenda item, I'll just be here in case there's questions and so on.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Excuse me. So in terms of our report, you know, I was really prepared to go over this letter that I just sent to Jeannie and but I will tell you some exciting things. We do have, I think, four or five new very qualified board members that are coming to an orientation on September twentieth. And we have been interviewing advertising agencies for our awareness campaign. And we, I think that's it. We granted ten thousand dollars for the hotspot program to the library. And I think that's just about it for now, but I've got a lot more to say in a little bit.
All right, thank you very much. Jeannie, would you like to give a library report?
Yes, please. We have two new library assistants starting this month, and we're very happy about that. These positions have been vacant for two years now. I think we put them on hold for the pandemic, but now we're filling in their part-time positions. And we're very excited about this, getting getting back to full staff, which means that we are going to open the library full operating hours. So we're gonna, starting the week of September nineteenth, we're going to resume Tuesday evenings and Wednesday evening hours. So Mondays will be open ten to six, Tuesdays and Wednesdays will be open ten AM to eight PM. Thursdays, ten to six, Friday and Saturday, ten to five. So this is gonna be great for us to be able to do evening programs, to be able to have passport appointments after school, after work. So we're very glad that we're able to get back to our full operating hours. And we are going to expand our passport appointment availability once we get those two new library assistance license as passport acceptance agents. So that'll take us a little bit of time, but not long. And, you know, it won't take very long. And then we'll we'll have expanded appointments. By the way, Saturdays are our busiest days right now for passport appointments, but we we do have openings all the time. So I want to be sure that the community is aware of this. We have passport appointments available almost every day. And if you're struggling to find an appointment, just look to the library because we have appointments and we can help you. Sometimes same day, if you have your paperwork together and you need a passport appointment to get your documentation mailed in, check us out. Thanks to the Friends of the Palm Springs Library, we have started up our Zip Books program again. So we we did do an application, a grant application with the California State Library, but we haven't heard back yet on that application. But the Friends have sponsored Zip Books and to get it going again. We have changed some of the rules. We are only going to do let allow five items at a time. And then we no longer are going to be able to do audiobooks. It's just too complicated for us to try to find the compatible versions of audiobooks. So we're just gonna stick to books on this program for now. We are grateful to the Foundation for supporting the hotspot program. That's great. We've got, we've got some replacement hotspots coming pretty soon. We've got some that have got grown legs and walked away. I have one that's dead, so we're gonna get some some new ones and get that, keep that program running. Craig?
Yeah, two questions on the Zip Books. The funding that you received, how long will that allow you to continue that?
Well, the Friends pledged ten thousand dollars. I asked them for three thousand dollars now just for gap funding. That could last us six months if we were really conservative with our selections. Some of the rule, there are rules. You can't order anything more than seventy-five dollars in cost. It has to be new to us. It cannot be something that we already own or something that we've already ordered. Because we do have money for that, too. So if they're, you know, don't think that this is the only way you can ever get a book from the library because we have money for books. It just comes to us first. But this program will send the books straight to your house. So, yeah, I think their funding, it could get us six months. I don't, we should be hearing pretty soon about about that grant. And I requested twenty-four thousand dollars from the state. So, yeah, it's a very popular program and and people love it and we we believe in it. So we asked the Friends to support us on that and and they did. They stepped up. So that's wonderful. And then our hotspot program is, yeah, and the hotspot program is great. It's so popular. So we're very grateful to the Foundation for that. We have a new teen program coming up. It's a life skill series. There's going to be a session with US Bank on financial literacy. And our City of Palm Springs Human Resources Department's gonna come out and talk about resume skills and interview skills. So that's kind of fun and some other programs. So there's a lot of information on our website, yeslibrary.org, has details and dates. We're also, we've also started a new tween program. So those kids that just aren't babies and just aren't teens, they're in between. We've started some programs for them. And that's typically on the fourth Thursday of the month. And again, check the website for details. They've they've done some cute things like they made Rice Krispie Treats. They did a little Bidget, Bidget Cube and some other things. So lots of fun things for them to do. And with the school schedule being adjusted, our tween programs and our children's after-school programs are Wednesdays at one thirty. So we've done some changes on that. The teen programs there at four thirty. So I think this tween program's at four thirty. We're trying to reach the middle schoolers. So it's kind of kind of a tough, tough to get middle schoolers and high schoolers together because their schedules are different. We do have continuing our virtual author series and we, that includes multiple authors each month. And I believe this is tomorrow, September, our one of our bestselling author and internationally renowned educational psychologist, Dr. Michelle Borba, is going to be on. We've also got New York Times bestselling author Simon Winchester and Pulitzer Prize finalist and PEN Faulkner Award winner Hernan Diaz. So see our website for details and dates and you can review the recordings after the event happens. So if you, if it happens when you're busy or not able to watch, just don't worry about that because you can go watch the recording. And then finally, city news, our city manager has left the building. His city manager's last day in the office was September first. And Teresa Galavan, who is our assistant city manager, is currently our interim city manager. So just wanted to let you know about that. And then that's really all I have for my report unless Julie did, if there's something else you wanted to mention. Happy to yield to Julie and also answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Um, no, I mean, I think you covered the highlights because we are getting our evening hours back. We are going to have some evening speakers again. So we will be hosting a Jose Saria exhibit at the Wellwood and the head of their foundation is actually gonna come and give a talk at the main library about his life and the exhibit that will be on display at the Wellwood for about two months. And then the Genealogy Society has resumed their in-person meetings on Saturdays once a month. And we're gonna try some learning how to play Mahjong. And so that should be fun. And so that is a registration program. But there's lots of fun things to check out. We also have a new book club. So for nonfiction lovers, so lots of things. So, yeah, just check our website, our calendar, come in and get the schedule and we're excited about having programs again. Oh, a question.
Yeah, question on the Mahjong. Is that the Chinese version or the American version?
Ah, very good. It is. We're gonna teach the Chinese version.
Excellent.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other? Oh, David?
This is actually a question going back for Jeannie, if I may. So I was aware just from the newspaper about the change of the, I should say, the departure of the city manager. Could you foresee possibly any impact on our plans over the next year?
Uh, no. No, I don't think so at all. In fact, I have a meeting next week with the the city engineer and Teresa and we're and procurement. And I think we're gonna work on a stop of work to kind of talk about what we would want to ask for when we do a request for bid or request for proposal. So we're just getting started and no, I don't, I don't think that's gonna derail us.
That's really the answer. I'm sure we all hope for, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Ed, you're on mute.
Any more comments? All right, thank you. We're next to our item six is the treasurer's report, Jeannie.
So our, well, I wanted to, I I included a memo in your packet because I didn't want you to worry about what the financials look like because they're not whole and complete based on the fiscal year closing out and the new year starting. So the city did set up our account so that we could actually continue to just to buy the things we need. So that's good, but they haven't closed out last fiscal year. But currently, what's showing in your balance sheet is one million, eight hundred sixty-four thousand, three hundred eighty-four dollars and ninety cents. And you will see that the notes receivable has not been paid off. But the the finance department is aware of that and it will happen. So I just want to reassure you that it will happen.
Any questions on the financial report?
One thing I wanted to mention in your consent agenda, the donation report, you might notice the donation report is blank. We're happy to accept donations. And get that started for the year. We want to have a full spreadsheet. So we'll eagerly await those donations to fill up that spreadsheet.
Amen.
Ed?
Yes.
Does, what's the next step with the measure J dollars we're receiving?
I think that's probably a Jeannie question, Jeannie.
Um, it's I'm not sure. Are they all, some of it measure J, some of it not measure J?
Yeah, it's a mixture of both.
So what happens is that we, the city will create a project, and I believe we already have a project number assigned. And then what they will do is they will allocate funds to that project and assign the dollars. So the money is all the city's money. So it's just right now, like your trust fund is currently sitting in a special fund. Measure J is a special fund. And what they'll do is they'll just assign it to the project and and allocate that money there. So when we get ready to start, they'll start, they'll allocate that money. So it's not gonna get, um, I say that, it's not gonna get taken away three years ago. Two years ago. So, yeah, that's the next step is when they, they'll assign it, they'll assign the funds to our project. So I don't really have have an exact answer, but the money's already been assigned and the city budgeted it and approved it in their budget process. So we're good.
Be a line item in the budget?
Under capital improvements, probably.
Yeah, and the capital improvements, they they do, they assign it a budget. I believe, you know, it'll be a a two-digit year dash and a two-digit project. And I think ours is maybe twelve or thirteen dash something. So we've had a project number assigned to the library for many years. And then J.C. Frye Building, too, has its own number. And they'll just assign the money to it.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Jeannie, so we're now down to item number seven, A, which is our election, the Library Board Trustees Chairperson and Vice Chairperson. As you probably saw from the packet, there is a process in an actual form and and script that I must read through this process. I'm going to ask trustee Norgard, since he's the one who submitted the report of the slide of officers to me, I'm gonna ask you some questions and you'll respond if we'll read into the record. This will be for the chair and the vice chair position only. The next item is where the new chair will appoint the new treasurer or the old treasurer, whichever. So starting off, please bear with me. I've only done this now the second time. So it's, let me get through this. But nominations are now in order for the office of chair. I'm gonna look to trustee Norgard. Do we have any nominations?
Yes, we do. On behalf of the ad hoc nominating committee, we nominate Craig Borba for the office of chair of the trustees.
Are there any further nominations of this office of chair? Seeing that there's none, it is with my permission that I can declare Craig Borba our new chair by unanimous consent. Let's move to the vice chair. So nominations are now in order for the office of vice chair, trustee Norgard. Do we have any?
Yes, thank you, Ed. On behalf of the ad hoc nominations committee, nominate Juanita Garner for the office of vice chair.
Are there any further nominations for the office of vice chair? Seeing none and without objection, the this vice chair position to Juanita Garner will be elected by unanimous consent. Congratulations to you both and good work. We're very excited. I request a motion, please, to accept the election and the elected office of chair and vice chair. Can someone please make a motion?
So moved?
May I have a second, please? I'll make the second. Maybe have roll call.
Yes, Ed McBride.
Yes.
Craig Borba.
Yes.
Juanita Garner.
Yes.
David Norgard.
Yes.
Congratulations to both. So at this point, I turn the gavel over to our new chair, Craig Borba.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate it. Thanks to the support from the Board of Trustees. I'm assuming now we go to seven B. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay. I would like to appoint, so we have some continuance here, Al Jones to be the treasurer, but Al's not here. So I'm concerned about appointing him right this time to see if he had any concerns.
We did have, he did accept the nomination to the committee. So I think you're okay if you want to go ahead and appoint him.
Great. Then I'd like to appoint Al Jones to be the Board of Trustees Treasurer. Can I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Have a second.
A second, that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, I'm just gonna keep it in the same order of this meeting and then next meeting, hot rotate. Ed McBride.
Yes.
Craig Borba.
Yes.
Juanita Garner.
Yes.
David Norgard.
Yes.
Four to zero approved. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to item seven C, trustees considerations of volunteer for committee assignments. At the bottom of that page on the agenda, page three, there's a listing of all the committees that we have, which would be the standing committees and the ad hoc committees. Ed, I'm not sure when you're gonna be replaced. We have city council elections coming up. I'm assuming they're gonna put it off till after that. So hopefully you'll still participate on some of these committees.
Sure.
Are you still a board member?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, so the first committee up there is advocacy. Ed, your name is there. Is there anybody else that's interested in being on that committee?
Now, traditionally, Craig, this this role, and correct me, please, Jeannie, this would be, let's say, we're about to be called upon or topic of the new building or something is happening in city council. This person may be called upon to testify and speak on behalf of the Board of Trustees. I think traditionally, we've always had that as the chair. So it might be that, I'm happy to to help, but it might be that this is a role that you would want to play as chair.
Okay, why don't we leave both names there for now?
Sure.
That works. Okay. The next one down is budget. Al really doesn't have a choice. He gets to remain on that committee. Do we have anybody else that'd be interested on that?
And I want to jump in there, too, and just say, you know, you don't have to place everything all at once. But you know, you can, you can wait until you get your new board member.
Oh, that's right.
You know, or I think the other thing is, as long as you all volunteer for positions, they are not, I think the standing, they have to have an open meeting. So if you decide to have a standing subcommittee meeting, it has to be an open meeting with minutes and agenda and the whole thing. If you volunteer for an ad hoc position or an ad hoc committee, then, and you're not assigned or appointed, then it can truly be an ad hoc gathering of a couple of board members to have a meeting to talk about something.
Okay. And and on this one, Craig, I'm happy to volunteer as transition until I leave because I would be the continuity between where we are now and maybe, you know, if you want to do it, or if Juanita wants to do it, or whoever wants to do it, I'm happy to serve as the transition.
Okay, great. Of the rest of the trustees, are there any committees that you want to be off or any committees that you want to be on that's not presently? Yes, Juanita?
So right here, it says the Foundation liaison. That that time that they have their meetings just doesn't work for me. I just can't, can't do that.
Okay.
And then who did we have? Was it Craig? Craig, are you now on the Foundation liaison?
I'm the liaison to the Friends.
Was it, was Al going to?
Yes, Al. I appointed Al to take over for Juanita and I was holding the position, assuming that I would be gone by now. So it's really up to you guys if you want me to continue or go back to that or whatever. I'm, I'm okay with that, whatever you prefer.
Well, why don't you continue and then we'll work on the changes after you.
Thanks. So David, you're stuck with me again. Sidley, you're stuck with me again.
We are happy to have you.
All right.
Okay, and I'd like to stay on with buildings and with the Friends. Al's down for measure J. David, is there a committee that you're on policies and bylaws? Is there anything else you'd like to?
I'd be perhaps interested in the buildings along with you.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
And then Juanita, you're gonna stay on policies and bylaws?
Yes, I also, I mean, I, I would really like to be on the budget committee only because I don't know a lot about that and I would like to learn more if that's acceptable.
Yeah, absolutely.
Jeannie, that would give us three. Is that gonna be a problem?
Oh, I only have Jones down and McBride out.
Okay, I thought.
Was it you?
Ed was gonna do it till he transitions out.
I can transition, but I certainly can transition faster to Juanita or not at all. It's okay.
Oh, that's right. I wasn't, I was thinking you were talking.
I'm gonna put Juanita, I'm gonna put your name there.
Okay.
And we'll work out the logistics.
Great.
Later on, okay. Does that meet the needs of the trustees? Okay, great. Thank you for your input. That would send us. Do we need to have a motion on this one or is it just stay?
No, because it's a volunteer thing. I I just leave those on there for placeholders for the for the format of the agenda so that you don't need to make a motion or stuff.
Right. Okay, that brings us down to item seven D. Discuss Library Foundation requests for funds. David, you have obviously some comments you'd like to make or presentation?
Yeah, I I sent Jeannie copy the letter.
copy the letter that I'm, I don't think I want to read the whole thing because that'll be horrible for all of us. But I just want to kind of formally respond to the memo that we got in July from the trustees and the response that I formulated. I want it to go chronologically in your document and I pulled out the questions and then I tried to answer them as best I could in my di- or this document from the foundation. And just to kind of summarize the whole thing, I mean, we answered your questions. We got the numbers and the number of donations and blah, blah, blah. You know, we're not willing to release the names of the, of our donors, but we gave you the numbers. And then just to let you know that, that I believe the intent of your letter was to find out if we are capable of raising the money that we need to raise. And the short answer to that question is no, obviously, this group cannot raise that money, but we know enough to know that we can't do that and we know enough to know how to get the people in place to help us do that. So we do have two consultants at the ready. And we're, we're going to hire more. So let me just kind of go through it. You know, we're, first of all, we're grateful for the, for the forgiveness of the loan, you know, thank you very much, everybody, you know, and the foundation was thrilled to hear that. It kind of takes a load off our backs for paying it back. And I think we can all agree that it, you know, it's all kind of going towards the same thing. The second thing is, we, we do agree that a memorandum of understanding is critical to this endeavor. And it was our understanding at the last meeting that that was a document that the trustees were going to prepare after consultation with the city attorney. And so we're, we're anxious to see that. And we are continuing to build our capacity to fundraise by hiring more people, more qualified people that have fundraising experience. We're really excited about the new people that have, that we're bringing on. We, we've kind of streamlined our nomination process and we've also refined it so that, you know, you guys know that in the past, if you could fog a mirror, you could be on our board and that isn't true anymore. You know, there's a series of interviews that people need to go through and they need to fill the, the, the portions of our matrix where we need help and, and we're doing a really good job of doing that. You guys asked for a position description for an executive director and an overview of the public awareness campaign, and those are attached to the document that Jeannie has to distribute. The next section is the numbers and just the highlights, our current assets are a hundred and forty-two thousand. Some of it's in a mutual fund, some of it's in a bank. Our major expenses over the last couple of years have been the $10,000 grant to the library for the hotspot program for the last two years. Fees for our infrastructure, for our database management program, for our annual giving letter printing and, and putting that letter together and then other miscellaneous office expenses, which are, you know, stamps and envelopes and stuff like that. Since 2017, we've received approximately $250,000 in donations. Seventy percent of those have been received since July of 2020. We were also the beneficiary of a major request in 2021 of $106,000, for which we're great, very grateful and as an aside, nobody seems to know who that, I mean, we have his name, but nobody seems to know who he was. But we're grateful for his, his donation. We've had 127 individual donations to the foundation. Most of them are through our annual giving letter, which goes out in, towards the end of the year, October, November. Those are unrestricted funds and the average donation per person is $320. The median is $125. Okay, so the next question in your letter was it would be helpful to see a plan or a broad outline of the completed camp, a contemplated campaign, campaign? I have it outlined in the letter. And the first, there, there's three things that need to happen before we can begin even planning for our campaign. And the first thing is that we're going to need a complete budget for the project and we're guessing that's going to come from the city at some point when we know how much money we're going to get from the state, the county, if anything, and then obviously we know what we're going to get from the city. And then we'll need architectural renderings of the final project because that's something that's really important to show to donors, even if it's just for fixtures, furniture and equipment. If, if that's, if that's what we're charged with, with raising money for, we're still going to need to show them the whole project to, you know, what's the furniture for? It's for this beautiful new library. That, those two things need to be done first before we can begin what's called the feasibility study. And the feasibility study is, is a study that we will hire an outside consultant to do. They, they will meet with major donors in the community, you know, the, the, the people whose names we know, corporate leaders, corporations, and they will meet with them, interview them and see if this project is worthwhile and if they're willing to donate. The, the feasibility study is a way of testing our plan for the goals and asking advice and opinion of the largest donors to see if our goals are realistic and feasible. If, if we can't, if, if the feasibility study determines that we aren't capable of raising that money, actually, not that we're not capable of raising money, i- if we're not capable of raising the entire amount that's needed, then we're either going to have to go back to the city and redo the budget and, and change the portion that we're charged with raising money for, or recommend reducing the scope of the project is what we're going to have to do. Then after that feasibility study is done, the foundation will create a steering committee, which will actually contain a few of those major donors and the most qualified members of our board that have fundraising experience. And we have three people that have had careers in fundraising, so we're, we're really excited to bring them on the board. And they will form a steering committee and the steering committee will stay together for two or three years and they will really be the backbone of our fundraising efforts. The, so the cost, okay, so that's, those are kind of the two huge steps. We're going to need to know, you know, the budget. We're going to need to know what the project looks like. We're going to need to know what we're raising money for and then we'll do the feasibility study. And the reason I'm telling you all this is because we know what we need to do. It's just that we don't know why we're doing yet or what we're going to do because we don't have the project in front of us. So that brings us to the grant and the timing of the grant. You know, to back all the way up, you know, it's possible that our, our ask was a little premature because we're not ready yet, but I think what we, what we should do is let's put the memorandum of understanding in place and maybe put the grant in place and then we could do a draw on the grant as we need it. And, and you know, maybe for each draw, you know, we can, we can show you a budget for that draw, like the feasibility study. We can present who we hired or who we want to hire, what they're going to charge us, what the outcome is, et cetera, et cetera. And then we could draw on that grant as we need it. You know, obviously we want to work hand in hand with you. We all, you know, I mean, this is, this is, you know, for those of you that know where we started, this is huge. You know, we do have our kind of roots growing into the ground and we're ready to take this on. It's just, we need the, the financial backing to do it and that's why we're coming to you. So we don't need any of the money right now. We will need it. We actually will need to hire an executive director person and that will be our main fundraising person. You know, they, they're going to know a lot more about how to raise money than, than, well, than I do. I shouldn't, I can't speak for the whole board anymore. Thank God. So I think that's it, Bill. I'm sure I missed a whole bunch of stuff. Maybe not. You do have that, you do have the goals of the awareness campaign and the executive director position description. And Jeannie, I don't know if you had a chance to mail that out?
I didn't. I just saw them and then the second email just came in.
Okay.
But yeah, I will send those out to everyone.
Okay.
At this time, are there any questions from the trustees for David?
Bill, it looked like Bill was speaking.
Bill, do you have some comments you'd like to make at this time?
Just, just to echo what David was saying that, you know, there's, we're going to have 16 board members. They're coming to us with a, a really good skill set, a set of expertise. And we're looking forward to teaming up on, on the big project and, and tracking with what Jeannie's working on with and you are working on with the city. And, you know, it comes down to, you know, what's, what the, it's going to be fun to, to understand what the, what the full vision is for the project and how far we want to run with it and so on. And we're up for the game as, as, as well as we can be right now and, and every month that goes by, we get a little bit more prepared to launch into what we need to do for our part of realization of, of the vision, so. And thanks for, you know, being our partner. And that's, you know, we're going to, we're going to do it together and so it's great from that aspect.
Thank you, Bill. Ed?
So, thank you for the, that response, David and Bill. So thinking about where we are tonight on September the seventh and the times that's passed, what, what do you see? What are you guys suggesting is our next steps to get this thing rolling? Are you suggesting that we start working on an MOU? Is that, you think that's the first step?
Yeah.
And if I, if I remember correctly, Jeannie, that's, that's a process that the city attorney actually offered assistance in having the trustees. They would work on a document for us that we could submit to the foundation to start the process, if I remember correctly. Is that, you remember that?
It sounds right. They probably have some templates already created from other cities.
Right. And more, and more recently, the one that they created for the plaza is another example, I think, that we heard from Dr. Ready, for example. He shared that document, remember, a few months ago? So I, I think that, Craig, we just need to reach out to the city attorney and, and say, we'd like to establish an MOU between our foundation to start the process of how we're going to work with them and how we're going to, not only just give money and grants, but also just how we're going to report, how we're, you know, there's a lot of things to it. I think that, that we, we need to identify in that document and get the foundation then to react. Now, I mean, where, where should this, I, I wasn't around. I mean, this is, to be honest, so Jeannie, do you remember back when the foundation was formed? Was there a special committee founded, formed by the, the, the trustees to handle that process? Do you recall how it was all done?
We worked with the city attorney and the city attorney at the time, Doug Holland at the time, helped create all of the incorporating documents to get them their 501(c)(3) and then there were two representatives, just like, two representatives from the trustees, served on the board and and pretty much the city attorney's office created the originating documents, the bylaws and the conflict of interest documents that they all had to sign.
We needed to find the scope of this MOU. And I'm just wondering, I'm going to be packing the desert, but I don't know what kind of shape I'm going to be in after I have the surgery. Maybe Ed, you and I could set up a first meeting with the city attorney.
Agreed.
And take input from the other trustees on maybe the scope and parameters you want us to cover in that. So you can just send me an email or send Ed an email, then we can put that together.
We can also, probably best thing to do is to meet via Zoom or, you know, virtually to, at least for an initial meeting.
Yeah, we can do that.
I think it's practical to do that, so we don't have to worry about getting together and getting COVID still.
I, I, if I remember the conversation we had with, about this, there, there is a template. And there are some questions they will want to ask us, Craig, so they'll just get on the phone and say, you know, what are you thinking? Here's what we suggest. It's kind of a give and take kind of, and then they'll formulate a document draft for us. Because they had some questions that I couldn't answer, but I, I think that they, they probably will have done this now. Most recently, like I said, so it's going to be fresh in their brain so they can, you know, say, here's what we think you should consider. Here's what you should look at. And then help us formulate that. And so David, that means that then we would submit something to the foundation board and you guys would either agree or you may have changes to it or you'd have something you might want to do too, so.
Yeah.
So tomorrow I can send an email to the city attorney's office and tell them that we're looking to get something scheduled. And we can work on that.
Then Ed, you and I'll team on this one.
Sure. Absolutely.
Bring it back to the trustees for their approval or of a draft that we would then send to the foundation. But in between, please send me your ideas of what concerns you have, what parameters you want this MOU to cover. Okay?
And, and I think that, and my final, I guess my comment would be that I, I think that the foundation's response that once we, we get this well on its way and, and maybe even finalize, it, it makes perfect sense for them to be prepared to say, okay, now that we have this agreement, you know, here's, here's our scope of what we think we're going to do. Here's how much money we need and here's a proposed release of those funds to us as we go through these, because I think that we're going to want to have the name, just the, the word just left my brain, but milepost that we're going to say, okay, once you get to here, you've accomplished this, you've, you've reported to us that you've done this, then we write a check, you know, so it's, it really, I think that makes perfect sense to follow that process and work with them on what a payment, you know, schedule might look like and, and tie it to reports and how they, how they've met those, those requirements.
And Jeannie, you'll get to the trustees, the letter that David has submitted.
Yeah.
And David, if I was, I think you said 142,000, but is that your balance right now for the foundation?
I believe so. Is that true, Bill?
Yes, that's our net assets.
Thank you.
Wow.
Hey, any other discussion on this item? Yes, David?
Yeah, no questions, but just a couple of comments. I wanted to express my appreciation to you, the David, the other David for this report tonight. I'm really heartened to hear the outline that you provided us tonight and I guess we'll be seeing that in writing at some point soon. And let me just note particularly the importance and it seems like you're would agree about doing an appropriate feasibility study. In my own experience of, of actually doing those, I usually come back with a range of numbers, just for example, you know, between 1 million and one and a quarter, you know, whatever. Or if the organization doesn't seem ready, no go, you know. So all that goes to say that the feasibility study portion of this whole project sometimes seems like kind of a go to the way of getting things done. But it's, it, so long as it's done right, it's really important and I'm so heartened to hear you include that in the, in the outline of how you see this. How you see this coming to pass. And then the steering committee that you mentioned following that, yeah, that makes perfect sense. And so I just wanted to to note that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments on this item, which is item number seven? Yes, Juanita?
I just, I, I just kind of wanted again, say thank you to the foundation for, I mean, to the, yes, for the the, all the work that you're putting into this, but also I just wanted to share very quickly, I was a member of a church that didn't have a location, didn't have an actual church. We rented and and when we finally hired the experts to help us, you know, with our capital fund drive, it made all the difference in the world, you know, hiring people who know how to do this, who know how to make money, who know how to raise money makes all the difference. And of course, we have a beautiful building now and we have wonderful things to offer the community. So I'm so excited for us, for the library, for the city. I think this is amazing. So I'm so excited for us, for the library, for the city. I think this is amazing and thank you again, uh, David.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, hearing none, uh, that concludes, um, Roman numeral eight, we'll move on to nine. Uh, any comments from staff or trustees?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Say. Thank you to everybody. So first of all, thank you to Ed McBride. For serving as our chair and being on the board of trustees for six plus years, so thank you. Virtual certificate. Here's your little pretending.
I'll, I'll, you see it on my wall, right?
Yeah, it's great, looks great, suitable for framing. And, um, I would thank all of you, um, and thank you, David Sidley, Bill Wiley, the foundation. And I know all of you, trustees, friends, foundation, you are all volunteers. Nobody's getting paid to do this work and I appreciate it, so I'm gonna double your salaries. Thank you so much. It's so appreciated, um, and the support that you give to the library and the care. That you have for this library and the project, uh, you know. You're doing all of this out of the kindness of your heart and I know it's a lot of work and so I, I just want to say thank you and that I appreciate it very much.
Great comments. Anything in those has to say? Okay, well, uh, hearing no other comments at six twenty-three, we will adjourn this meeting. And our next meeting is scheduled for October nineteenth.
Yes, it's an, it's an unusual date because we had some conflicts of schedules and. So that one's October nineteenth and then the next one after that is November ninth. That's, um.
Wow.
But, and I believe that one was just because it was too soon to have the next meeting, right? Is that what we had talked about?
Yeah, uh, maybe we can discuss that at our next meeting regarding the November meeting and we have one scheduled for December, correct?
Yep, the December seventh. Same time Santa will be at the library. Maybe Santa can come to our meeting.
It'd be nice. Uh, any comments from the, uh, uh, city regarding, uh, meeting in person?
Not yet.
Okay, so the city council's still meeting, uh, virtually also? In.
The last one, they had actually every, it was virtual because they didn't have air conditioning, but, um, they're doing like a hybrid meeting at city council, but the boards and commissions, they. For us, I mean, planning commissions meeting in person, but, um, for all the rest, they don't have the capabilities. To do, um, hybrid meetings, so they're just saying stay virtual for now, but Julie.
Well, you said adjourned, so I, I thought I should stop the recording, but then you were still talking about business, so I didn't stop the recording. So I should, should I stop now?
Uh, I just have one question.
Okay.
We can, uh, do we, does the library own an owl so that we could do hybrid meetings?
Not yet, but we've talked about it.
I put it in my budget, great, Craig, I asked for that, but we'll see if I get it.
Have you used one, Craig? Because I've used one and it was kind of weird, but it was okay.
Yeah, I've been using them for a number of years, but the last two years with the new improvements, they're wonderful. And I run board meetings for RAP, we have twenty-three board members plus staff. And it works and it feels like they're involved, so.
We, um, we've talked about doing that, but, um, I don't know that the city would even allow us to. Just go hybrid for us, um, even with, if we bought the device, but we've talked about it for the friends meetings. And, um, and some other things, so.
And it might in the future help us with having a quorum. Uh, maybe we can, uh, Ed, when we talk with the attorney, we can also discuss that item as a, something we might want to bring up to the city.
Yeah.
Okay.
Craig, thank you. Craig, can I ask one, one quick question, please?
Yeah, sure.
Um, Genie? Any, any further word from the state on the grant?
Not yet. No, they asked us for some additional information and that was due, when was that due? End of July, I think. We had a. A while ago. They asked us for additional information, um, which was. Made me feel good because we already had the information, it was really easy to turn it in. They wanted some details. And so we, we turned that, turned that around right away and submitted, I believe that was the end of July. That, nothing yet, but they actually are hiring a person to manage the projects, so. It would be great if they could announce those right away.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah.
Okay, it is now, uh, six twenty-six, uh, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all for your attendance. Sorry, Julie, about screwing up the tape.